Chang, Neltado, Waltonroyd, Hertz, Marsh, Randolph, Shabazz, Tibbetts, Council President, we have a form, let us stand with the federal agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now have invocation by Reverend Nicole D. Harris, Pastor of Christ Memorial A&amp;E Zion Church, Atlantic City, New Jersey.
Let us pray. Dear heaven, Father, we are thankful for this moment, for this meeting, for this business that is going forth, and we ask that as the business go forth, that you be in the midst, whatever it is that we adhere for tonight, whether it be to recognize one who has passed an impact of the city, or whether it's to recognize officers who may bring rescue, or whether it's to recognize workers who work for the city diligently with all of their might, we ask that you would be with us as we review ordinances and finances and public safety, we ask that you would be in the midst of it all, that all decisions be made for the benefit of all people, of all sections of this community, that all would be able to say this meeting and this business was held and done well. It is in Jesus' name that I do pray, amen.
Amen.
And with notice of this meeting has been provided as required by law by the city clerk, sending to the press and the Philadelphia Inquirer on January 2nd, 2018, and published on January 8th, 2018, and to the Star Ledger on January 2nd, 2018, and published on January 8th, 2018. A list of the meetings for the council of the city of Atlantic City, including notice of the meetings scheduled for July 18th, 2018 at 5:00 p.m. in the Hangtiger Council Chambers, Room 206, City Hall, 1301 Akron Boulevard, and also a copy of said notice was posted by the city clerk on the bulletin board, main lobby, first floor, on same date. All of the acquiesced compiles with NJSA 10:4-6 edsec, known as the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meetings Law, with NJSA 40:698-179.
If there are any, anybody, gentlemen, who can stand and let some of these women on the wall have a seat until the room clears out, it would be appreciated.
Thank you very much.
This is a regular council meeting of the city council of Atlantic City. Before we begin, please be aware of our rules in this chamber. All persons are to be seated unless all seats are filled, in which case you may stand against the wall in orderly fashion. We ask that all gentlemen remove their hats. All persons are to remain quiet during these proceedings, this is so that everyone is able to hear what is going on. Please turn off all cell phones or set them to silent. No one shall speak unless they are invited to do so by the council president. Shouting, interrupting, speaking out of turn, or acting disorderly in any fashion will not be tolerated, and anyone doing so will be removed from the meeting. When and if you are invited to the microphone to speak, please state your name and address. You will be allotted three minutes for comment. Please respect the time for other persons and end your speech within the three minutes allowed. If it is your intention to ask a question of council, you will be permitted to ask a maximum of two questions. Your questions are to be clearly stated, and after the questions are asked, you are to take your seat. The council president will determine if the question can be answered and by whom. Finally, please understand that there will be no personal attacks or name-calling. If you do so, your time will immediately be cut short, and you may be asked to leave. Reports and recommendations from the mayor, ordinances 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 18 were signed by the mayor on June 18th, 2018. Council President and committee reports.
Shabazz.
Mr. President, the planning and development committee met on July 5th, and we have several resolutions for the situation of my colleagues, and I would ask for support on all of them, with particular attention to the ones that address the infrastructure. I know Councilman Tibbetts, Councilman Chang, and Councilman Hertz have spoken about those concerns, and we have some resolutions from our committee that address those concerns directly, and I would ask for support on that. Additionally, we had 30 year tax abatement from the Elliott House that I would ask for support. The Elliott House is one of the long-ranging housing developments in Atlantic City that its abatement will enable them to refurbish with new owners and also keep the character of the Elliott House, I would ask for support for that. And I would call my colleagues' attention to the contract for William Crane. We need a professional planner in the planning department, and we have the ability to retain Mr. Crane's services, that's Resolution 432. He has a long history in planning and development in Atlantic City, and I would ask for support on that and the rest of the resolutions from planning and development. That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Health and Human Services, Licensing and Inspections of Technology, in addition to the several items on the agenda this evening, we have three updates. One is that progress was made with regard to the effort to put Mercantile and other permits online. There was a landmark that was reached internally that's enabling that permitting to go online once a banking component is approved. It's taken a long time, but this was a key milestone to get over, and it happened successfully internally, which will help immediately with the efficiency of that department. But as I mentioned, it enables us to move closer to getting those permits online for people to apply for at their convenience, as opposed to having to come here during business hours. Secondly, downstairs, a lot of people may have noticed the directory that's known on the TV screens, that was something that was implemented by IT, want to thank them, that is something that we're going to improve over time, and possibly pending funding, add some type of wave-faring system where people can have a more comprehensive idea of where things are within City Hall when they enter there via our screens and possibly some kiosks down the road. And thirdly, want to thank the Recreation Department, as well as our MIS, for updating the recreation info. So anything you want to know about summer rec, as well as the Whalens, Whales, swimming program, all that info is up to date, I think it's pretty helpful to people. And that is my update, thank you.
Mr. Council President, public works and public safety met July 5th, and we just had some items that we discussed that we're wanting, will probably come up in the next, that's council meeting. One of the discussions was an agreement for Atlantic County and Atlantic City Fire Department to switch...
Jim, you're in.
That's working. That's it? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Alright. An agreement with Atlantic County and for the Atlantic City Fire Department to switch the county's radio network at no cost. That was discussed, and hopefully it will be on the next agenda. We're having a problem with restrooms in the city of Atlantic City, the public, the porta-potters, so we've had Carl Timmer's to look in in San Francisco and in New York City. They have self-clean restrooms, and we're trying to look into that, and maybe we can come up with some solution, because I think everybody out here knows that's a health hazard. And so we're looking into that, that's my items that we're discussing, will bring you up to speed after we get back with Carl Timmer's. And we had a gentleman come in who's retired from the fire department, and he wants to ask the fire department would they use the fire hard hoses to clean out the drains. We have a drainage problem, and I think that's a pretty good idea, it has to be looked at, it has to be worked through, and that's just a discussed item that will bring you back up to speed. And we have a young man by the name of, I forget his name, but anyways, he has a bike, I think people have seen it on, it's called Heartbeat Riders of America, he has a 51C three corporation, and he promotes health and wellness, and he wants to be at the Amplifier Theater in Brighton Park. So that's my report, I'm sticking to it, and hopefully we'll have some items on the next agenda. Thank you.
Anything from any other council people, just discussion?
Alright, revenue and finance report. We've issued several refunds due to overpayment of taxes. We authorized the payment for royal printing for the primary election printing material in a total of $24,796.20. We approved a one-year agreement for municipal payroll services at $90,000. There's a resolution to accept our annual audit report from the year 2017. We are approving a temporary budget number seven, this is before we adopt the budget, this was a lot of grants involved in that. We're approving a public auction for bicycles on August 2nd. We also updated our business list for the state of New Jersey. We issued a wire transfer for our third-party administrator for $963,716.45. And tonight, we adopting after the public hearing on second reading, the 2018 municipal budget, as I said many times throughout the community and throughout public hearings here in the city council. Not only should this body up here be proud, the administration, the state, the residents of Atlantic City, the business owners of Atlantic City, this was a difficult budget year, and as I stated, you know, we all should be proud that our taxes came in flat this year, because the other option was to inject $16 million in the budget on each and every one of us in this room, and that wasn't acceptable. Kudos to the finance team from the state of New Jersey, we were able to, you know, add more revenue than anticipated into the budget as well with the bond issue to keep this budget flat, so we need to give ourselves everyone a round of applause for that. And one of the issues that we passed a few months ago was a way to kill two birds with one stone. You know, we have a serious drug epidemic in this city, there's an opioid crisis, and you know, the city council was proactive in, you know, soliciting someone to sue pharmaceutical companies on our behalf, but it was held up in the attorney general's office, they want to discuss it further, so I look forward to those conversations, because not only do we potentially get these illegal drugs off the street, but we sue the pharmaceutical companies and give the city another revenue stream as well, so that's looking up. We had our meeting with the state, our bi-weekly meeting, and I say continue to be the day horse, the mayor says, interject life, so whatever it is, we want to keep putting the pressure on Creed and everyone. We have a serious crisis on Pacific and Atlantic Avenue, these are our main, when people come into the city, this is the first thing in the city, and it's not a pretty picture. Yes, we have good news from the municipal government, taxes is still low, we have good news that people are investing, you got Stockton, Hard Rock, Ocean, you know, coming on board, that's a good thing, but we need to get our house in order and take care of the quality of life, because those people aren't from Atlantic City, we all know, we preach it all the time, the Greyhound therapy, but they're in our city, and we got to take care of the problem, so we have to aggressively attack it. Another issue that we wanted to do in our police department, our men and women in blue do a fine job, but we have to find a way, so that way we can have more community policing in the neighborhoods, we can get our offices not only on the boardwalk, but onto Pacific and Atlantic Avenue, I mean, it's hot outside, I'm sure everybody want to walk around the city, but you know, nobody's walking around the city, you know, dealing with that, so we are, you know, asking, we appreciate CRDA, they've helped us tremendously by being a funding mechanism, not only for the Class II officers, but the uniforms, and the sergeants and the lieutenant, but we need help overall, so we're making a strong push to get more full-time cops, if, you know, they want to pay for it. It's not only about the tourism district in the city, we have neighborhoods, we have people's quality of life being affected, and if we don't have the necessary manpower to do with all of us elected officials want, which is community policing, cops getting out the cars, on bicycles, walking the beats, in all of our communities, that's the goal, so we're going to keep having those discussions. Tonight is a support resolution on the agenda out of revenue and finance for the Elliott House pilot program. This has been a two-and-a-half-year journey, and I think we're finally making a step in the right direction to get this done. Once the next steps are taken, they'll come back, through our attorneys will negotiate and have a pilot ordinance on the agenda for a city council to consider to pass. And speaking of the Elliott House, one of their board members, Brian the Godfather Jordan, his birthday was yesterday, so everybody say happy birthday to him.
Happy birthday, Mr. Jordan.
And he's the other guy with the eagle shirt on.
Yeah.
And just so some of you want to look at like, well, why everybody has on a suit except for Marty and Speedy? They didn't get the memo in June, July, and August, who wears short sleeves up here? So I just wanted to put that on the record. But also another program that we're hoping to bring to fruition, we're working closely with Rick Riccadella, our state monitor, as well as the state, we're trying to bring Class II firefighters to the city. I know that there's a lot of great young people and families in Atlantic City who benefited from the police officers with the Class II program, and hopefully, once we get the necessary funding, those young people from Atlantic City will go right up into fully sworn police officers, that's the goal, it's almost like a minor league system, like a feeder program. So hopefully we'll have the language and everything worked out in time, that this body can entertain a program, hopefully 20 people from Atlantic City only, this is giving our young people from Atlantic City an incredible career opportunity by trying to be a Class II firefighter, so we hoping that if everything goes right with these negotiations, that we'll have all our support up here. And lastly, as I stated earlier, Resolution 429, after, you know, the public hearing will be adopting the budget, but what's more important, two weeks from now, we'll start to have those discussions on the 2019 budget. And once again, this is for the employees that made over $40,000. Discussions have already begun on how to duplicate the same thing in the 2019 budget. We're not going to make any promises that we can't keep right now, but just know that everybody on that committee is going to work extremely hard to make everyone whole, and we hopefully want to open up negotiations with the unions, that's not a council function, but I know a lot of you have been, you know, waiting many years, upwards of six years, without getting a raise, and you know, we definitely empathize with that, so that's my report. That was a note.
Advocate.
And also, unfortunately, we lost one of our former council colleagues, Councilman Gabe Jones, passed away at the age of 91 years old. He was the former first ward councilman, and we decided that it wouldn't be a better way to honor him. Is his family here?
His wife is here.
Yes. Come on up, Ms. Phyllis, come on up. We, several of us attended the funeral, and we thought that it wouldn't be a better way to honor Gabe, than to let him join us one more time on the dais. That's Councilman Waltonroyd's normal seat at the end, but we got the Gabe Jones name tag up there, we shifted everybody around, just so Gabe can join us one more time for one more meeting. So I'm going to ask everyone to give a moment of silence, and then we're going to hear from Gabe's wife.
I'd like to thank the Atlantic City Council President Marty Small for honoring my husband in such a special way that he'll never be forgotten. Thank you.
And before we move, before we move the agenda, we're going to honor two, but one was an employee, and one is a boss, but Cynthia, Cynthia Lindsay is leaving the city of Atlantic City, so we wanted to thank her for her tremendous service. I had the opportunity to work with her very close for the last three years, taking trips to Trenton, you know, they've been fair, the budget meetings have been here in Atlantic City recently, but she's an incredibly smart person. Tim Cunningham did the right thing, because there were a lot of municipalities near and far after her qualifications, and Tim Cunningham snatched up and took her to the state of New Jersey, where she's the Assistant Director of Local Government and Services, but we get to keep her at least one day a week, and she's a tremendous resource, and you know, we value your time here in the city of Atlantic City, and we just want to present you with a certificate.
With humble appreciation, we want to present this certificate, which reads, "City of Atlantic City Certificate of Appreciation Presented to Cynthia Lindsay, presented in appreciation of your dedicated and devoted efforts, and in recognition of your steadfast commitment on behalf of the residents and taxpayers of the city of Atlantic City, signed by the Honorable Council President Marty Small Senior dated July 18th, 2018."
Thank you very much. I'm humbled, a little emotional, this is very Thursday for me, I enjoyed my time here with the city. I'm not going to miss you all, because I'm still going to be here one day a week, and I hope I continue to partner with you and my fellow workers to move the city in the direction. I want to thank Tim Cunningham for this offer, I'm flattered, I'm excited, and looking forward to moving in the forward direction always. Thank you, thank you very much.
And the city of Atlantic City...
And finally, we want to honor Tim Cunningham, who was Director of Local Government and Services, in charge of the local finance board. You know, we have a history that goes back, but I've always respected his professionalism. You know, he had to make tough decisions, when the legislation was passed, he was the one that took over Atlantic City, so to speak, it was him who was designated. But through the time, and fighting for the residents of Atlantic City, and you know, getting to know him better, you know, personally and professionally, I can't believe in many of my colleagues up here, even though we had tremendous disagreements with them on some decisions, we can honestly say, as we sit here today, where we were two years ago, he definitely cares about Atlantic City. And some of the visions that we had, he led the charge in making sure that, you know, employees felt appreciated, and we know, we all said, everybody, $500, you know, isn't enough, but you know, he led that charge and really cared about the taxpayers, and every conversation I had with him for the last three years is, no tax increase, no tax increase. So it is, you know, he's definitely going to be missed, whoever's taking his place is a tremendous shoes to fill, and I'm happy to say that, you know, not only your colleague, but, and I also consider you a friend, is moving forward, you'll be missed from the city of Atlantic City.
To a consummate professional, we present this certificate reading, "City of Atlantic City Certificate of Appreciation Presented to Timothy Cunningham, presented in appreciation of your dedicated and devoted efforts, and in recognition of your steadfast commitment on behalf of the residents and taxpayers of the city of Atlantic City, signed by Council President Honorable Marty Small Senior dated July 18th, 2018."
I've stood in front of this microphone many times, but this is certainly a different experience. After three and a half years of my current position, my career is taking me in a different direction. Unlike Cynthia, however, I won't have a chance to work with you guys, and I will miss you terribly, I'll miss the residents of Atlantic City terribly. Considering the circumstances under which our relationship started, I think this award means more than anything, or this certificate means more than anything to me, because it shows how much we work together, and how the relationship changed and evolved, and I can leave here knowing that every decision I made, and every step I took, was for the betterment of the residents and taxpayers of the city of Atlantic City. I'm humbled, I'm honored, council president, council members, mayor, and to my dear valued colleagues, likewise, I consider you friends as well, and thank you for the recognition, and thank you for the help and respect you've given me over the years. Go Giants!
I'm beginning, I'm beginning, but Cynthia, first of all, thank you for the work that you've done for the city of Atlantic City, we all appreciate it, and we will see that one day a week, so we won't miss you.
Looking forward to it.
Okay. Tim, we had a lot of disagreements, but we weren't disagreeing. You're a consummate professional, and we really, really appreciate the work that you did for us and with us, so I think I cheer for the council, and E-A-G-L-E-S. Forget that.
I was expecting to go, I was expecting to go Yankees, come on.
Not here.
I just want to take this opportunity and thanks to you for all the work you've done, you know, throughout the time you've been here, and it's good to see you once a week or so. And, you know, keep doing what you're doing, wherever you're going from here, it'll be a pleasure wherever it gets you to have, you know, with, who and what. And as far as Tim goes, you know, Tim is kind of, is kind of bittersweet, because this is your last meeting, Charlie Gilmour is not here.
I know.
And he's been standing up on your taxes, you know, in that with you, and in some way, somehow, we got to connect the two of you, so you can at least say goodbye, and he can ask you about ten more questions as you say goodbye. From the onset, I've always respected you, and always agreed with you, but in the end, you know, disagreements turned into mostly agreements, and I know you had, you had the best interest of Atlantic City, and hate to see you go, but again, thank you for all the hard work you've done on behalf of residents of the city of Atlantic City. Oh, and yes, it is bittersweet in terms of you being a Giants fan, me being an Eagles fan, but we do share something in common. Go Yankees!
That was wonderful, not you. Okay. You can't go to New Orleans, so talk.
Let me just say, Cynthia, I echo everyone's sentiments, you have been obviously a professional, someone who's very competent and communicates easily, and I wish you all the best as you go to Trenton, and of course, we've been looking to see you one day a week and continue the relationship. Tim Cunningham, aside for your misguided in sports, you have shown very good judgment and the ability to make difficult decisions in a personable way, and I think that we could, those of us who are in government at every level, could take a page from your book, how to work with people, and have a disagreement, and continue to move forward and come to conclusions. I think at every level of government, we see that sometimes when people don't agree 100%, there's a hostile environment and an attitude that doesn't make for progress, and I think that you've shown that we can do that. I wish you the best in all that you do, and maybe we will convince you to come around for your disguises with the Yankees and the Giants.
Do you want to put the public hearing on the budget after, after recognition?
Well, you know, we can do it now, because I don't suspect when it's done.
Okay. Now the public hearing... We now have the public hearing on the 2018 municipal budget.
Anyone from the public like to speak on the 2018 municipal budget? Anyone from the public like to speak on the 2018 municipal budget? Means we did a good job seeing none. Public portion is closed. And also another housekeeping item, um, for the residents and people that are in here, there's a film crew here from London that, that have been in the city for the past four years that have been documenting, they're doing a movie on Atlantic City that may be picked up by Netflix. So, some of you are going to be extras in the movie.
Council President, would you like to bring the budget resolutions up at this time?
Yes.
So, we have 405, which is the temp budget, and we have 429, which approves the budget. So, moving on 429.
Yeah, we'll, we'll move on 429.
429. Okay. So, resolution 405, and this is...
429.
Uh, my fault. Uh, for, resolution 429 is a resolution to adopt the 2018 budget.
May I have a motion? Move it. Moved by Randolph, second. Second by Marsh and Chang.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, adopting budget. Resolution 405 will not be needed, so that resolution...
Motion.
Okay, we have resolutions of recognition.
Um, I'm going to ask my colleagues to look at the resolutions of recognition. Um, we have a few of them on new business, but we want to, um, deal with these at first that aren't regular resolutions. Are there any family members from any of these primaries? If not, we're going to hold them and vote on them as one. So, would you like to...
For 404 and 406, Mr. President, that they're going to be presented at another time.
Okay. So, we want to, we want to adjourn 404 and 406. 394 is here.
Just in code, I'm going to vote them, there's nobody here, that I'm...
Oh, so, okay, no problem. Is anyone else here from the...
390 is here. And 395. I think 392 is...
394 is here.
Yeah. So, we got 390.
392.
392. On 391, we're going to move that to the next meeting. Okay. So, we have 390, 394, and 395 that are here. So, may I have a motion to group 388, 389, 390, 404, and 406?
Uh, 390 is here.
390 is here, okay. Move it. Second. So, part of the group is 388, 389, 392, 404, and 406. May I have a motion? Move it. Second. Moved by Randolph, second by Chabaz.
Okay, so voting on resolution 388, that's a resolution of condolence to the family of Robert Lee Beck Jr. 389 is a resolution of condolence to the family of George Bush. Resolution 392 is a resolution to the family of, a condolence to the family of Gibb R. Jones Jr. Resolution 404 is recognizing and committing Joseph Mohammed for his devoted efforts to promote public safety. Resolution 406 is recognition of Gwendolyn Corbin Condeed, pastor of New York Avenue Church. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative. We have resolution 390, and this is a resolution of recognition of Andrew, I'm not sure how to say the name, Buckin.
May I have a motion? Move it. Moved by Randolph, second by Marsh.
Whereas three local high school athletes are getting a chance to prove themselves with some of the best rowers in the country. And whereas Andrew Buckin from Holy Spirit High School attended the U.S. Rowing U-19 National Men's Team Selection Training Camp in Chula Vista, California. Selections will be made from 54 rowers and Coxwains at the men's camp for four crews that will compete at the U-19 Junior World Championships. And whereas Andrew is a 17-year-old Atlantic City resident and a rising senior at Holy Spirit High School, he is quite versatile and works very hard, capable of rowing either way, sweep, which is eight boats or four boats, or sculling, quads, doubles, and singles. Whereas Andrew and a Holy Spirit teammate, Brett McGeadigan, were a highly successful boys varsity double crew this spring. They took second at the SRAA Regatta, less than a half second behind winner Brophy College Prep of Phoenix. During the season, they two won at the Garden State Scholastic Rowing Championships and the Philadelphia City Championships. Whereas Andrew and the other three members of his quad team won the gold medal at the 2018 K&amp;M Max Regatta on 14 July and the bronze medal in the doubles category on 13 July. These victories assisted the U.S. team in also winning the 2018 Team Points Trophy, representing our country at this international event. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Atlantic City hereby proudly recognizes Andrew Buckin on his achievements and encourages him on his future aspirations. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative and we have a presentation. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
I would just like to thank, uh, the Council of Atlantic City for, uh, my recognition, uh, for all my work that I've done for the past three years and, uh, for my family, my coaches, but I would thank them very much. Thank you.
We have resolution 394, and this is a rec, resolution to recognize and commend Deirdre Brock.
Ooh. May I have a motion? Move it. Moved by Randolph, second. Second by Marsh and Chabaz. Make it all council.
All council. Whereas Atlantic City resident, Deirdre Brock serves as the property manager of Jeffrey's Tower located at 227 North Vermont Avenue. Whereas on January 4th, 2018, a multiple alarm fire occurred at Jeffrey's Tower resulting in the emergency evacuation of 300 tenants in adverse weather conditions. In the aftermath of the fire, tenants were required to relocate to temporary housing. Whereas throughout the emergency situation, Deirdre Brock was instrumental in assisting and coordinating the relocation of residents. She also went over and above what was expected to help tenants return to Jeffrey's Tower. Whereas Deirdre Brock continues to demonstrate professionalism, compassion, and kindness as she works diligently to address the daily housing needs of the residents of Jeffrey's Tower. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Atlantic City hereby recognizes Deirdre Brock for her determination to assist tenants of Jeffrey's Tower and commends her outstanding efforts to help improve the quality of life for Atlantic City residents. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative and we have a presentation. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to be real short and sweet. Um, this is truly an honor and I'm humbled for this. This is far more better than getting an Oscar. I just want to, I'm going to be very quick. I just want to thank you all, especially you, Mayor. You came right in and provided the housing and transportation and Councilman Bucking Board. You was there every single day, rang my phone. Thank you, President Smalls, for allowing me to thank to you. Mr. Randolph, Council Randolph, you call me every day. Thank you for the McDonald's meals, uh, Council Kirkz and Chabaz, thank you very much. And I have the best family. They have supported me. And I, I just want to say that I didn't earn this alone. I have my colleagues. Please, can you just stand for a moment because I couldn't have done none of this without you. And I believe that you should be recognized as I am. So, please, you know, you...
This, this is a resolution which recognizes Officers Darryl Catania and Jonathan Walsh for heroic ocean rescue.
May I have a motion? Move it. Moved by Randolph, second by Marsh. Kurtz?
Small.
Whereas a 10-year-old swimmer from Philadelphia could not free himself when his foot got caught in a wood groin in the ocean, which was installed to prevent beach erosion. Two Atlantic City police officers responded to a call for help at the beach of South Carolina Avenue. Whereas just after 8:00 PM, Officers Darryl Catania and Jonathan Walsh found a 10-year-old boy screaming for help in chest-high water with waves continually crashing over his head. And whereas Officer Catania, a former member of the Atlantic City Beach Patrol, entered the water to free the boy's foot from the wood groin. Officer Catania yanked the boy's foot free and carried him to a beach patrol tent nearby for medical attention. And whereas the boy was treated on scene for an injury to his lower leg. Officer Catania was transported to the Atlantic Air Regional Medical Center, City Campus, where he was treated and released for an injury sustained during the rescue. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Atlantic City hereby wishes to recognize Officers Catania and Walsh for their adept rescue of a youngster who experienced a harrowing event. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative and we do have a presentation.
Hey, um, Director, excuse me.
Thank you. Which officer are you?
Catania.
Catania?
Yes, ma'am.
Captain, would you like to take Officer Walsh?
I have a few things to say. Um, I wrote them down because I'm not great at public speaking, so. I want to thank the City Council for honoring my partner and I. We're grateful that we're in the right place at the right time to pull Elijah out of harm's way and that Carrington didn't become a victim too in his efforts to save his little brother. This is probably my fourth or fifth rescue in the 12 years I've been a police officer. That followed maybe hundreds when I was on the Atlantic City Beach Patrol. My mom took me for swimming lessons at three years old. Pretty good decision, right, Mom? Thanks for that. On a serious note, this is the sort of thing that made, I'm sorry, this is the sort of thing me and my fellow officers are prepared to do every day with, quote, on the uniform. The ocean, the ocean is fun, but it's also dangerous. People need to know they can get in serious trouble in the water after their lifecards go off duty. So, it's good to see the police department giving it the attention it demands. We need to teach young people how to swim and to respect the ocean. So, thanks again to the City Council for this honor and we're just glad to know the kids made it home statement sound. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, we, if I, if I may, just one, one comment. I actually picked up on something that the officer said about just kind of being in the right place at the right time. And, and there's some truth to that. And there's, you know, as a person of faith, you realize that God puts you where you're supposed to be, but I, I do believe it should be stressed, the heroism to say yes and to respond when you're in that position. And not everybody does. And so, for that, I mean, we, we all applaud you and maybe some food for thought for the chief and the police foundation. You guys do a lot of great work, but, uh, maybe there's a way that we can partner on something like Whalen's Whales, just to offer more swimming lessons to our kids. Because it seems like each year, and, and thank God that you were there for this, but we're always reading about these stories about the kids drowning after hours. And it, it just, it, that point never gets old on me that we've got our kids growing up in the city and they don't know how to swim. And so, whatever, not blaming anybody, but just whatever we can do to put our minds together that everybody pitch in to try to help the kids get the swimming lessons, I think that that would be just a tremendous thing for us to do. Thank you.
Council President, I'd like to also add, piggyback on the idea of, uh, having our children learn, uh, because unfortunately, we have a large amount of people, adults, uh, that still don't know how to swim, living here on the island as long as they have. Um, and that's a travesty, living on a barrier island. We were reminded, uh, not long ago when Sandy came in, how the water is not necessarily something that we need to play with. So, we have to be conscious with what, uh, exists around us. But in addition to, I'd also like to add, let's take it a step forward, further. Uh, maybe we can, uh, put a letter out to the CRDA, the Casino Industry, um, to do a better job in monitoring the waters around their facilities and all the, the arrays and beautiful boardwalks. Maybe they can do something to do also to help with, with the beach itself, scanning for items that came in that were stuck for years from, uh, hurricanes and what have you. There's beach replenishments that take on, uh, the, the, what is that, the Army, quote, engineers, that private firm that has nothing to do with the U.S. Army. Um, they came in and did this wide scope of, uh, of replenishment in the beach and, I was going to say that they didn't find these items around it. We potentially have to be, well, we have to be always, uh, concerned of what potential dangers lies in the waters around us. If we are a beach town and we'd like to promote our beaches, we have to make sure that they are as safe as we possibly can make them. Um, some, I'd say about 15 years ago, an engineering firm came into Atlantic City with a proposition that most people thought was kind of foolish, was to build a dam, um, some mile and a half away from the city to, uh, create a harbor for Atlantic City that would also implement the opportunity for, um, ships to come in and embark on this as a destination. Maybe somewhere in the archives of our files and submitted, uh, reports, we can look into doing that as well and include, um, an engineering feat that we need, uh, to, to care for our beaches a little bit more. So, it won't be anything like this, so children can feel a little bit more comfortable in swimming in our areas. But that's just food for thought. Thank you.
I want to thank the two officers who were springing into action so quick and saving that young, uh, young child's life, giving him a second chance. Too many times, uh, we're not lucky enough to save them. Thank God you guys were there and able to do that. And, uh, since there's so much time between this meeting and the next meeting, I also would to recognize and remind you guys, you know, Officers Mancuso and Reynolds saved that newborn baby's life. They were almost certain wouldn't have made it if they didn't get there in time and spring into action. So, as well, thank you to the ACPD. Thumbs up to your guys, chief, and, uh, the work that they do.
I was just going to piggyback what, uh, Council Tibbet said. Maybe at the next meeting, we can have a, uh, resolution to honor those, uh, two officers who saved a baby.
Will do. For new, new business?
411.
Well, um, let's, let's vote on 415 first and then we'll put on 411. May I have a motion?
Yeah. People here, the young lady.
I got it.
I know, I know. I know how to move things around.
Resolution 415, resolution to award contracts for interim professional engineering services and inspection services to Mays or Consulting.
May I have a motion? Move it. Second. Moved by Randolph, second by Chabaz. Um, just a quick, uh, comment, um, administration and, uh, you know, I met with the state... Administration and I met with the state yesterday. This was the firm of choice. Our interim planning director, Bob Preston, felt very comfortable with them. Everyone around the table felt comfortable as well. So as many of you know, may or may not know, our city engineer abruptly resigned. Literally, his last day was yesterday, so this is coming at the perfect time. As you know, with many projects going on, you know, the city needs an engineer. So this is what we're going with until further notice when, you know, we talk about who could be the full-time person, whether it's a consultant or an individual, as we had in the past. But this is a decision that we made to go forward.
Council President, a question first. Who's the point of contact for engineering during this arrangement while we have a vendor who's performing?
Well, as you know, traditionally, engineering has been under public works. Few years ago, they made the change, and tonight we entertain and bringing that back under public works, way should be.
Why, with all due respect, Council President, that will take probably two readings and then some state review. In the interim, who's the point of contact for engineering services? And I bring out, in particular, we have a bulkhead that's caving into the bay that's supposedly designated as an emergency by us, which we did, and still has not been acted on yet.
As Bob Preston, as of now, will be in charge of engineering. Who's Bob? Bob Preston is the engineer. Is he in the room? Does he sit right there?
He's right there.
On that bulkhead, Bob.
Call the vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontelroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now we'll bring up 411.
411. This is a resolution recognizing Asada Jenkins, The Links Incorporated, National Poster Arts Contest winner.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Seconded by Randolph, seconded by Marsh. Make that all counsel?
Counsel. Whereas The Links Incorporated consists of nearly fifteen thousand professional women of color in two hundred and eighty-nine chapters located in forty-one states, the District of Columbia, the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, and the United Kingdom. And is one of the nation's oldest and largest volunteer service organizations of concerned extraordinary women who are committed to enriching, sustaining, and ensuring the culture and economic survival of African-Americans and other persons of African ancestry. And whereas, since its inception in nineteen forty-eight, the Atlantic City, New Jersey chapter has collectively contributed fourteen hundred annual documented hours of community service through civic, educational, and intercultural activities, with a focus on improving the quality of life in the larger community through effective, relevant programming and quality service. And whereas the Atlantic City, New Jersey chapter, celebrating its seventieth year of friendship and service, pursues excellence by identifying and meeting community needs while implementing key programming initiatives organized into five program facets. Services to youth, the arts, national trends and services, international trends and human and health services. Whereas the Atlantic City, New Jersey chapter's arts facet invited students from the Atlantic City Public Schools to compete in The Links Incorporated two thousand seventeen eighteen National Poster Arts Competition themed "My Vision, My Future", showcased at the chapter's forty-ninth annual art show in February at the Stockton University Arts Garage. And whereas Asada Jenkins, a seventh-grade student from Pennsylvania Avenue School, was selected as one of twelve semifinalists, winning two hundred and fifty dollars from a total of two hundred and forty-four entries nationally, in which thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixteen votes were cast online, receiving eighty thousand views through the county and abroad. And whereas a panel of seven artists and art educators judged the artwork of the twelve semifinalists at the forty-first National Assembly of The Links Incorporated and selected Atlantic City native Asada Jenkins as the one thousand dollar first-place winner nationwide over art submissions from Fort Pierce, Florida, fifth place, Oakland, California, fourth place, Naperville, Illinois, third place, and Washington DC, second place. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Atlantic City does hereby recognize and congratulate Asada Jenkins on being chosen as the first-place Category Two winner in The Links Incorporated two thousand seventeen eighteen National Poster Contest. And be it further resolved that the City of Atlantic City Council does hereby extend congratulations to the Atlantic City Chapter of The Links Incorporated, the second-installed chapter in the national organization, and the first link added to the chain of friendship on its seventieth anniversary of community service to the City of Atlantic City and region. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontelroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative and we have a presentation. Congratulations, good job.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to thank the Atlantic City Council for this honor. I would also like to thank my art teacher, Ms. Smaller.
Come on, Ms. Smaller.
I would like to thank her for helping me and guiding me through all of this. And I would like to thank The Links Incorporated for letting me participate in this amazing contest. And I would like to thank everyone for coming out, taking time out to come out and support me. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Linda Brown Kidd. I'm the president of the Atlantic City, New Jersey Chapter of The Links Incorporated. And I wanted to make sure that I said that we're so proud of Asada. Where did she go? Come back, Asada. Come back. Come back. Take your five, ten, or fifteen minutes of fame. We are so proud of her. And to think that out of all of the entries nationwide, that's amazing. So I would like for you to give her another round of applause. I had this contest, this peace for art contest, finally, and we were just so thrilled and excited that we had a winner, a first-place winner. I'd like for the members of my chapter to please stand if they're here. There are a few of our ladies in the back. And thank you to our arts commissioner, Ms. Donnie G. Harris. And that concludes my remarks. I appreciate you, thank you so much. Oh, by the way, this is her picture, isn't it fabulous? We need to get it on a mural, we need to put it on a mural somewhere in this city.
And I think it's very important, I want to congratulate Asada, who is a seventh-grade student at Pennsylvania Avenue School located in the Great Second Ward. I happen to know the principal very well. But in all seriousness, I had the pleasure of having Asada's mom in my precious jewel summer camp many, many, many years ago. It's all good. You know, but great job you're doing, you know, raising her. But to have, it's great to recognize children all the time. Now, if this was a situation where, you know, one of our teens did something horrible, this would have been packed with all the national media outlets. We sent out a press release from our press contacts here on City Council yesterday. There are some members of the media here. I thank you for that. Because if we're going to criticize our children when they do wrong, she's representing Atlantic City on a national scale. I mean, this is, this is big time. So congratulations to you. Let this be a motivational force that, you know, we teach our children that we want them to compete globally. And you're doing it through the arts. And if Atlantic City, you know, going in a direction where, you know, the arts are more welcoming, there's the Forty-Eight Blocks, there's the Noise Garage, there's other, you know, the Atlantic City Arts Commission. This is a step in the right direction. So, young lady, keep up the good work, stay out of trouble, and you'll be fine. So, thank you.
Mr. President, briefly, I was proud to be a judge in the local Atlantic City contest where Ms. Jenkins won. And I just want to say to her mother and to her family, I'm so proud of you. And to The Links for the work that they did in the community. Thank you so much.
Spoke for all of us, we're all proud of her. All right, we'll bring up, we'll bring up Resolution 430. Yes.
Resolution 430 is a resolution of recognition of Mrs. Linda V. Brown Kidd.
Move it. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Seconded by Randolph, seconded by Marsh.
Whereas Mrs. Linda V. Brown Kidd is an Atlantic City native. She was educated in the Atlantic City Public Schools, Massachusetts Avenue School, then went to St. Nicholas Grammar School and graduated from Holy Spirit High School. She continued her education at Douglas College, Rutgers University, graduating with her Bachelor of Science in Design, furthering her education at Fashion Institute of Technology, New York, and later received her MA in Educational Leadership from Rowan University. And whereas Mrs. Brown Kidd is retired educator, having served the Atlantic City Public Schools for twenty-seven years as a teacher of intellectually gifted. Her dedicated service to the community includes serving as the general chairperson for ten years of the local debutante cotillion sponsored by National Sorority of Phi Delta Kappa Inc., Iota Chapter, one of three coordinators of the Forty-Eighth Eastern Regional Conference of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Inc., board president of Grammar Street Park Homeowners Association, to name a few. Additional leadership roles included serving as president, treasurer, Atlantic City Alumni Chapter, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Inc., currently Arts and Letters and Technology Chair, President Jack and Jill of America Inc., Atlantic City Chapter, currently the associate chair. And whereas currently serving as the president of Atlantic City, New Jersey Chapter of The Links Incorporated, Mrs. Brown Kidd represents a stellar group of like-minded, service-oriented women. Having been a member of the chapter since nineteen ninety-seven, she has served in a variety of leadership positions, including vice president, membership, vice president of programs, corresponding secretary, member of the arts, services to youth, and national trends facets, archives, education, Founder's Day Committee, fundraising, public relations, and technology committees, to name a few. She offers her knowledge and advice willingly and generously to anyone and everyone who needs it. And whereas the loves of her life, husband Glenn Wood L. Kidd, sons Emerson and Jared, granddaughters Zuri and Sayadi, and family are her priority. "Her life is a testament to her belief that one should do all the good that you can by all the means that you can, in all the ways that you can, in all the places you can, at all the times you can, to all the people you can, as long as ever you can." And that's a quote by John Wesley. "And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Atlantic City hereby recognizes and acknowledges Mrs. Linda Brown Kidd for her dedication and devotion to community service." Delgado? Fontelroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
She's from the First Ward, yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative and we have a presentation. Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you very much for the recognition. You know, I was hoodling today. I just want everyone to know, I had no idea this was going to happen. I am humbled. And I just want to say, any chance you have, any of you, any of you, to help somebody, you need to do it. Because when you do, you may not get an award or anything else, but you will have a sense of fulfillment that'll carry you all through your life. The young man, Darryl, that came up, he was one of my students. A couple of other people in here, I taught. You know, tissue messes up makeup, too. I thank you. I don't want to stay long, but I don't often get honored, and I don't look for honors. But I do make sure that I do what I can to help whoever I can, even if it's giving you advice, cussing you out, straightening you out, motivating you. And everybody in this room, by virtue of being here, I'm sure you do a lot of the same thing. Michael is my student.
Yes, sir.
Yes, right. So anyhow, thank you so very, very, very much, Councilman Smaller. I appreciate you. My first ward council president, I appreciate you. Mr. Marsh, I appreciate you. I don't know you, Mr. Kurtz, but we appreciate you as well. Mr. Shabazz, we appreciate you. And Vatika, our Links organization, really appreciate all your support. Mr. Delgado, we appreciate you. I don't know you, young man, but I'm sure you're just as wonderful as everyone else.
Council President Chang.
We don't know about that.
And Mr. Fontelroy was my first, one of my first first-grade class. So that makes me feel good, and of course.
We got to talk about that.
Thank you, everybody, thank you.
Council Vice President, we are at public comment on agenda items.
Council President, I've been waiting for a meeting where we didn't have any recognitions of naming streets after anybody, because I didn't want to bring something up and taint whoever happened to be being honored that they were street-named. But as you know, everybody in the City of Atlantic City is very important and the most important thing to some family. And every single person deserves a street named after them. Unfortunately, there's not enough streets in the city. I would suggest that we could build a wall outside where my company would do the finish on it. And then we could start buying these little plaques made out of brass, two-by-three, where we put Atlantic City stars and start naming everybody out there. Just recently, somebody was really pissed at me because I wouldn't support...
They were upset at you.
Excuse me. But because I wouldn't support a street naming after a developer that developed something. Well, streets are for very special occasions, not developers. But we're starting to run out of streets. It's something that I think we should look into doing out in the courtyard here where everybody can visit it and thousands of people, we visit it. And just something to put out there because we are starting to run out of streets.
Okay, we are at Good and Welfare. The first two names are crossed off, so the first name is Linda Brennan.
I've been coming here for almost a year, so I couldn't have what I wanted to say, but I wanted to apologize that here for the first month, I was pretty worried. I'm upset down there, I won't not be mentioned, but after what Mr. Smaller said earlier, that took such relief on my shoulders to know that it is, you know, you know. Well, I wanted to say, what can you do to help being from getting the runaround, from getting the runaround from Darryl Finch to facilitate the closing of a drug-infested building in our community? Within, with Atlantic City making a big comeback, this drug-infested house in the same block as the boardwalk with all of our new college students here, the casino over here, all the work everyone else is doing to make it a better community, why is he allowed to go on with this ongoing property at 1401 Memorial Avenue? Thank you. I'd also want to thank Detective Anne McWilliams, who I love so much. I'd also want to thank Detective Anne McWilliams, who loves so much when she found my son's body in that house after a couple of days. And thank you very much for your time.
Linda Kemmerer.
Good evening, my name is Linda Kemmerer, and I live at thirty-one oh one Boardwalk, and I know this has been welfare part, and I just would like to say that as a resident of Ocean Club, the noise on the beach until four A.M. this past weekend was crazy. With my doors and windows closed, sitting in the living room, we could not hear the TV unless we turned it way up. I was on the understanding that they were to close at one A.M., the music did not go off till four A.M., both on Saturday, Friday night, and Saturday morning. In addition to that, last week, Thursday and Friday, a whole area of the section of beach was roped off by the beach bar with umbrellas and chairs. You could not get on there unless you rented his umbrellas and chairs, and he closed off the Mars Avenue ramp. So I watched people all day come down Mars Avenue ramp with children and strollers, and you know, when you take children to the beach, what you have, and they had to go to the right or to the left, they had no access to the beach. So I don't know if this is going to be an ongoing thing, the fence is down now, but I want to ask the council, is that allowed to have private area of the beach roped off? And my second question is, do we have a different ordinance for open-air structures as compared to something that's closed? For example, the Wonder Bar or Bangavon, they're enclosed, so is the noise ordinance the same for something that's open-air like a beach bar as opposed to something that's closed? Thank you.
Excuse me, your questions, and I think you have a lot of other speakers coming up, so all of them, or most of them will be answered after everyone speaks.
Thank you, sir.
Well, this can be addressed right now, you can't, it's going up. So your questions will be addressed right now, so I think.
Now, this is on the four oh one Memorial Avenue.
No, it's not.
That building is a Ruby House, we did, have been there several times, we had issued a notice to close the building, and they appealed the decision to the core system. We are now litigating that property. The intent is to abide the properties and to move forward. Just today, or yesterday in fact, we gave a notice to Fox Manor, which is another problem in the city, and we ordered it to be closed tomorrow by twelve o'clock. So we are working very hard through the mayor's office, through all the administration, to really work on some of these problems, and I clarify that.
I hate to break it, Mr. Cunningham's great reaction may be complimenting you, if I mean you correctly. This is four point six D in the lease for the Chelsea Beach Bar. And it reads permitting any outdoor entertainment, including live music, on Friday and Saturday evenings only between the hours of eight P.M. and morning A.M. I'm hoping that that was deliberate and tried to be helpful. Unfortunately, it is clear language, and any misinterpretation of it would be bad faith. However, the city seems to interpret it differently, and so code enforcement cannot enforce the time limit. The police can't do anything when you're loud and overtongued. What my understanding of the readings of the time is that they have to do multiple readings, and then do, take the lowest reading, and then subtract two. So let's say sixty-five is your limit, and they're playing at eighty, seventy-two, and then there is a sixty-six. Minus two is sixty-four, he's free and clear. I also like to go to the point of bad faith. I think that the clarification that came out recently that explains differently of what that, or what that lease means is bad faith. It clearly is changing the meaning of what that ordinance says. Now the clarification says that they cannot music after one o'clock if they don't have a microphone, or if they're sticking within the limits, which they never do. And one other point, according to the lease, the speakers are supposed to face the beach. From what I have heard from people who have seen those speakers, they might as well be on swivels. Those speakers face the beach when it's appropriate for them, maybe somebody's coming, but then they face our roof, they face the board. We're not a group of angry people who don't want entertainment in Atlantic City. We're a group of residents who pre-seated the beach bar. It was our understanding, beach bars were always attached to casinos. We're in a residential area, we may be in the tourism district, which offers a lot of opportunity, but having this incredible noise is affecting the well-being and the health of people who live here, and it is affecting the quiet enjoyment of their homes. Thank you.
I just want to offer a brief comment. As I stated here, and as I stated a few Saturdays ago when I came to a residential meeting at Ocean Club, city council and, you know, all elected officials are here to support the residents. We also have an obligation to support the businesses as well, and want to encourage businesses to succeed, and make it a win-win, you know, for everyone. I think that the Chelsea Beach Bar has an obligation to be a good neighbor and vice versa. Everybody should, you know, feel the same. But the confusion is with the contract, many of you had no idea, I met with your president of the association, Mr. Strauss, and I explained to him in detail the twenty-seven-page contract and the points that were, you know, referring to you guys. The problem is, I think the city stepped in recently and changed some of the language. The city did not create this contract, and I'm not here to throw anyone under the bus. The person that created the contract is no longer here. But we have an obligation, because I get phone calls from you guys, I get an incredible amount of emails, when I see you guys on the boardwalk and I'm riding my bike, I stop and talk to you, and we're in a situation where this agreement was done. If you notice, when it came on the agenda, I pulled it, because we weren't aware of what was going on. Then we found out that the contract was done in the terms of the lease, and when we met a couple of Saturdays ago, the question was, it's only speaking to possibly Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, but it's not speaking Monday through Thursday. So literally, you know, you can operate, there's nothing in the contract, but I believe Mr. Perrin-Gina, he can speak for himself, has amended the terms of that contract to include language that speaks to during the week. And I get it, no one would like, you know, to be disturbed in their own backyard. I mean, that's a part of the fabric of having a great quality of life, and we want the Chelsea Beach Bar to be good neighbors. I mean, they have a contract, they have to abide by the terms and conditions of the contract, and we just have to do a weekend to make sure that it's enforced, working through the police department. Listen, we've supported you guys every single step of the way. Y'all asked to come to committee meetings, we had your president come to committee meetings, he spoke to the police. I called Dell Finch on Sunday, he was handling problems. So you're not being ignored. It is our job to make sure that your quality of life is intact, as well as we want the businesses to succeed. I mean, Atlantic City is hot, there was a time where people didn't want to develop anything in Atlantic City, and I understand you were there before the beach bar. There's a, you know, when people develop, and I understand your frustrations of not being in the know initiative, but we are going to work together with the Chelsea Beach Bar and you guys to hopefully come to a happy meeting. I mean, I think that's what we really seriously need to do, you know, we need to come together and work this out together, because they have a lease, whether we agree with the terms and conditions or not, they have a contract, and the contract can't be broken unless they violate the terms of the lease, which we are doing everything possible to work on this situation. I mean, I understand the frustration, I mean, I get it, but at the same time, you know, our police department has been out there a whole lot, they respond to your calls. I'm not an expert in, you know, measuring decimal levels, but there's a process in place, and those professionals are trained to do that job. But we agree with the decimal levels or not, I mean, I guess we have to go by what the machine says and what the professionals say, but that does not stop you from feeling uncomfortable in your contract. So I suggest, I suggest that, you know, we keep this dialogue going. I know Mr. Cunningham is no longer want to be with the city very shortly, he didn't write the contract, but it's important that we work together on this, because like I said, we're not against you. And like I said, I talked to some of you, listen, you, you're a tax pass, you put us in office, even though we're not, you know, I'm not in the fifth ward or whatever, but we still represent you as a whole. So this is not a situation where it's us against you, them against us, we want everybody to win. Because like I said, it's a tremendous turnaround here in the city, both on a governmental level, the investment level, and, you know, we just want everybody to be happy, but, you know, unfortunately, sometimes everybody's just not going to be happy, and we understand that. But it's our job to protect your quality of life, and we want to do the absolute best job that we can to respond to your concerns, and we want to continue to do so. Ms. Diamonds, it's no back and forth, Ms. Diamond, there's no back and forth.
I thought I sat down, I didn't stay up.
No, but your time, your time was up, Ms. Diamond.
I just think you broke the record. It's not in the chart.
No, I understand that, but he didn't write the contract. Mr. Cunningham did do it.
But he didn't do it.
No, but he didn't do it. So I just hope you guys understand, you know, where we're coming from. This was not an act of Atlantic City Council, and we have been tremendously supportive in everything. So next speaker.
Council President, before we go to the next speaker, just a comment. I know it was said a moment ago by the vice chair that director was going to answer at the end, but there's a lot of issues getting on the table. One goes beyond the Ocean Club, from my recollection of the last speaker, and I think this does merit a response. You know, I grew up on Hartford Avenue, and so that wasn't my beach at Mars, but like I would hang out with people at Montpelier and Mars Avenue, so like it's also a community issue if somebody's closing beach access to Mars Avenue, I don't know if that's substantiated or not, so, I mean, the director, the chief, I mean, has anybody substantiated, are we closing beach access at Mars Avenue?
He did it.
And that was what one of the claims were, I mean, just, sure.
There was a temporary fence put up last weekend for an extension of his footprint for serving alcohol. He applied to the state for permit, state permitted the permit, but the fence didn't have the proof, so therefore he could not extend his footprint for the alcohol, and the fence has been removed.
Well, see, that's another issue. You know, we're talking about, you know, the city's role, CRDA's role, everything should come to the city. We should know what's going on, they shouldn't get permission from one entity leveraging it against another, and everybody's pointing fingers at each other. So that's what we're working on, to bring all zoning and planning and land use back under the City of Atlantic City where it belongs.
May I, Council President? I just want to clarify a point that Mr. Finch just made, when we talked about the state approving that. I believe it was the state A B C that did that, and not the Division of Health Government Services, and I think that only amplifies the point that you were just making, that we need better coordination on this. So while it's true that I'm moving on in my career, I will be at the division until the middle of August timeframe. While I've met with representatives from Chelsea Beach Bar, I think that I should and would gladly meet with representatives from the Ocean Club, along with some of my colleagues, because clearly there's a disconnect in what I'm hearing, so I also have a meeting, and, you know, we welcome it, and I think we should get it scheduled sooner than later so I can fully understand what's going on.
Is there someone here that can coordinate that meeting with Mr. Cunningham?
I don't know.
Yes, before he leaves, and, you know, we'll do our best to attend as well. So, and I just want to say I'm not concluding anyone from speaking unless you're right as a resident, but if some of you signed up to speak and you're concerned the issue was heard, if you didn't mind when your name is called, if you don't want to speak, and you feel comfortable with the responses that were given to you tonight and the upcoming meeting with Mr. Cunningham, I want to just ask you to just say you don't need to speak. Thank you.
Ray Dickey.
Ray Dickey, three one zero one, Boardwalk. City Council's been terrific, actually, you guys have been big supporters. I think that's the most frustrating part, we're not getting anywhere. I'll just call it like this, I can feel like the state is throwing us under the bus, a hundred percent. We have absolutely not had any contact with the state up to this point at all. The Chelsea Beach Bar is not a good neighbor. You can check with the police department, there's violations on records, there's A B C violations. This is not someone that is interested in a win-win for everybody, and that's been the main problem here, and at some point, I think we're going to ask the city to step up for us, because when you're talking about a win-win for everybody, you're talking about a win for one business owner, and right now it's a loser for hundreds and hundreds of Ocean Club residents. We recently just had a resident meeting, and we have been implying there, this is not noise in your own backyard, this is an actual health hazard, you physically can't sleep until five A.M. This goes on from eleven A.M. to five A.M. This business is not following the rules, they've been breaking the rules for forty years, and we feel helpless. And I feel, the frustrating part is, I know you guys want to help us, absolutely, city council's been awesome, police department has been awesome, in many ways, Dell Finch has been awesome, but we're not accomplishing anything, we're being basically tortured out there, and this guy has no respect for Atlantic City, and he certainly has no respect for the other residents. And I'll just call it like this, because that is the situation, but if there's no question you guys want to be supportive in, don't feel like we don't appreciate it, because we truly do. So thank you.
Michael Diamond.
I just want to, I also live at the Ocean Club, I just want to echo my appreciation for everyone here. All I've seen in this room tonight is love and support. Thank you so much for looking into what's happened. I think that we got onto a road that's a wrong road, but everyone, with your help, is going to get back to servicing Atlantic City and being generous in all respects. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I can't read this next name, it looks like person from Lenwood. Herschaw, person, Ratson. Winston Michael Ray.
Yeah, here with me for one minute, let me put on my outfit here. Mr. Mayor, I want you to acknowledge me. I love Atlantic City. First my obedience, oh my God, pardon me, I'm someone over here. This is my American antique apparel. I think I achieved the first thing I wanted to do to get you a picture, I don't like that, or he sure is going himself twenty bucks soon, he's selling about a hundred million. Let me get to the point. My name is Winston Michael, I love Atlantic City, I'm homeless. I'm homeless, and I'm the happiest homeless man in the world, you know why? You know why? The only difference between me and every other homeless person is that I'm in charge of a worldwide marketing movement that will end homelessness, that houses, well, let me rephrase that, in revenue segregation and economic gym crow that houses homelessness and all the other socials we don't belong in. Now, let me get to the point. I only have two minutes. I've been passing this around, out right here July the 9th of this month, in hopes of, well, getting the support of the Mayor, this distinguished body, to stand with us, where I'm presently staying. I don't think I'll be here tonight because my time is up. I've got that Atlantic Rescue Mission to be the first city in the nation to publicly embrace a 99, and let me think I'm exaggerating, a $99 billion silver sales marketing movement entitled Worldwide Silver Rights Movement. Now, I'm going to get to the point. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to ask you point blank, sir. And I know we had a little talk just before the meeting started. But now I need to know where you stand. Because see, now, this is the deal. And I heard so many times people saying, that's waiting a little long. We got to study, we got to analyze a little bit more. It's all like the sudden citizens of the 1950s and 60s when they were debating whether they want to pass a civil rights bill or not. I hope we never revisiting those days. Mr. Mayor, point blank, Winston Michael Ray asking Mayor Frank M. Gilliam Jr., will you or will you not be the first mayor on the planet Earth to publicly stand with the citizens that are suffering for money in this city to support the Worldwide Silver Rights Movement ASAP? What is your answer, sir?
I have no knowledge of what you're talking about.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I've just given you information since July 6th. I've been coming back and forth to your office. Mr. Mohammed has this information. This is the deal. If Atlantic City, which is Atlantic City, my birth city of New Orleans, is called a Crescent City, New Orleans, they're on strength by to take the ball and run with it and make that old touchdown. If Atlantic City doesn't do it, then the first $50 million earmarked for marketing is undeniably incontrovertible intelligence information that we've got to draw 54 cities. We have to penetrate 54 US cities in the West with KGB. I think Donnie Trump and Bad Black Putin would kind of like that language now. You work for Soviet Union now. It's no joke. It's a joke. You work for Soviet Union. I got you. But anyway, Winston Michael Ray, you will be seeing me for the next 15 years. And I don't know, it's your problem. It's up to you, it's up to you, it's up to you.
Mr. Ray.
Prince Anat is saying that he's from New Jersey. Remember, if you want a man for president, you seize him to a degree.
And Mr. Ray, guess what? I did it my way. Time's up.
Well, you know, now, now, Mr. Mayor, anyway, we can call you.
Mr. Ray, excuse me, sir. We're going to respect the rules in this house. Thank you, your time is up. We talked to the Mayor on the sidebar. Mr. Ray.
Now, I'm sure to be on sale very soon.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Charles LaBarre.
Good evening, Council. For those who don't know me, my name's Chuck LaBarre. I retired from Atlantic City Fire Department on July 31st, 2016 as a Battalion Chief with 28 years and eight months of service. Without a bling issue on my career. I always served with honor and dignity. And as per my contract, in every contract that I worked under in my entire career, I was entitled to accumulate one year of running sick time. And I've yet to receive any of it. It's two years to the end of the month that I would retire. I have documentation from the city that acknowledged the amount that is owed to me, correspondence from Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Keeza State Internal Leave Payouts on hold due to pending litigation. It was stated by Mr. Cunningham in the May 2018 council meeting here that money has been and still is allocated for this obligation. The State Attorney General's office has stated that employers cannot alter any running sick time earned by employees hired prior to the year 2010. I'm just hoping somebody can help me. I've been very, more and more, I think, I go out, I'm really going out on a limb that I've been more impatient. I'm asking, requesting a meeting with anyone who has the authority or information that could clarify the status of my internal leave money. And I've sent correspondence and, you know, basically been in notice except for two letters back from Mr. Cunningham and maybe one from Mr. Spence. Can anybody clarify? I've been patient, it's two years. I don't want to go into details of what it's like raising 12-year-old triple boys. Okay? But, you know, I'm just like a middle-class guy that's waiting for, you just talked about breaking contracts. Well, I've been patient, more than patient. And I'm asking for Council's help to get me a meeting with somebody that has some answer, that's not going to just kick it down the road, pass me on to the next person or just... Yeah, not right now. It gets very frustrating. And I keep coming up here and reminding you that this issue does exist with about 20-something employees that retired in 2016. I retired prior to the state takeover. If someone had told me this was going to happen before, I would have picked an earlier date. I didn't have a crystal ball. And I've been professional, and I've been patient, and I've gotten basically not even answers from certified return receipt mail. Does anybody have anything to reply on this for me at all? I'm trying to avoid litigation with the city. I served my career with dignity and honor. I treated every single call like it was the most important call. Anybody? Anything?
No, I mean, it's ongoing, but we're trying to get you the appropriate.
Trying not to be sarcastic, but really, I'm holding back a lot.
Listen, I understand. I spoke to Mr. Graham several times. We're aware of the situation. But this situation is out of our hands. And that's the appropriate person to answer the question at this point.
Well, he's still on the, on point.
No, but, I mean, he's still here for another month.
Unfortunately, I can't offer a different answer than's previously intended. The litigation with the Atlantic City Fire Department is ongoing. As long as that litigation's ongoing, the concept of terminal leave is one component of it. The same answer that I provided in previous meetings is unfortunately the same answer that I'll give tonight.
Mr. Cunningham, without going into the case, I get it. Since that lawsuit's been filed and those current employees filed a lawsuit, there's cutoff date. These guys were long gone prior to any lawsuits, prior to any, the new state bills or the state takeover and everything else. And they were owed the money and working with the city because we didn't have the money. I'm just curious like what that group of guys has anything to do with any lawsuit that happened when the state took over? These guys are born before the state even took over. Are you able to even talk about that? Like, why these guys are even lumped into anything prior to you being here?
I can only say that the obligation was due and owing at the time that the Municipal Stabilization Recovery Act came into effect. So therefore, it gets pulled into the, to the existing litigation.
Next speaker, please.
Saul Sonnen.
Saul Sonnen. I am two Ocean Club units at the Ocean Club condominium. I sent around a letter that I wrote. First of all, I have to thank the facility. I've been in communications with Dale for a long, long time. And I appreciate everything that Council is trying to do. I guess the question is, forgetting the sound levels and all that, the interpretation of the lease. In my opinion, he has been in default more than once. I own shopping centers. And when my tenants were in default, I would give them notice. And I'd give them time to cure. And if they didn't cure, then I can make a decision. And we keep going on and on and on. Now, last weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I've had the police in my unit taking readings. And it's just an ongoing situation. And we're playing cat and mouse with this guy. He adds speakers, he turns speakers. He gets DJs that bring their own speakers. So how do we interpret this lease is really how I'm asking the question. Any answers inside?
Anybody? Dale, anybody?
Attorneys?
Well, you know...
No, 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 no. Wait a second.
The Ocean Club, I believe, is represented by Council or has consulted an attorney. If you need an interpretation of your lease, you should speak to your attorney. We're not going to get legal advice on that issue in this open forum. Somebody asking for legal advice, I'm just asking, has the city determined the, what is considered a violation of the lease? Yes, we have. You have? Are you able to share that?
I will speak to your attorney if your attorney calls me.
He's not my attorney, he represents the board. I'm here as a private citizen.
Okay, then, no.
You're not going to answer that?
No, I'm not going to answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Victor Jenkins.
Doctor, everybody. My name's Victor Jenkins. I live on Ocean Avenue. And my fiancee is the mother of the late New Jersey State Trooper Frankie Williams. Was in a crash December 16th. She runs and manages three of the houses on Ocean Avenue. She and myself have been the force behind trying to clean up the street. And I want to thank Chief White. Done a great job cleaning up the street. Thank you. The street has been 30 years known as Drug Haven. It's been cleaned up. And I want to thank you, Mr. Aaron, for just signing off for the new signs that we have, which are the No Drugs Zone. I want to thank Paul Jerkins for putting up with me and designing the sign, installing the signs. Now, what we need is enforcement of those signs. We want that street to be the street that nobody wants to come down for nefarious activity. We have some problems on streets there. We need police activity or presence between hours 11:00 at night and 6:00 in the morning. I'm afraid to go out. My wife, my fiancee's afraid to go out late at night because people are hanging around the streets and doing all kind of crazy stuff. That area between Tennessee Avenue and Ocean Avenue should be a no-lawdering zone. That is where all the trouble emanates from. It would be easy to eradicate the crowd. We have 24-hour undercover road table darts. You can spot who's doing what and what's going on easily. And I think the problem will be resolved. Another problem that we have that needs to be immediately addressed is it's a one-way street, but we have a lot of cars coming up the street. I've almost got hit a couple times. I'm going to, we would like you, or like the city, to install two signs that say, do not enter near where the Super 8 Hotel is. Two prominent signs because people are coming up that street and don't notice the signs that are there. Also, on Ocean Avenue, people are racing down the street late at night like a speedway. Or like, or would like very much, if it's possible, to have speed bumps on that street to prevent accidents happen. The other thing we also need is to have police to be a little bit more proactive in their approach to people who are doing nefarious things on the street. Because I think there's some people that continue to come by and they don't take the police very serious. And also, we need to have a more congenial way of being able to deal with the problems on Ocean Avenue. I would like very much to thank everybody who's participated in the signs that are there to help us make the street a little bit better as a state. Thank you very much.
Mohammed Ahmed.
Good evening, everyone, today in this room. My name is Mohammed Ahmed. I represent the Bangladesh Association of Armanik Army. And we are bringing a Bangladesh festival on Thursday first. You are invited to come to share our Bangladesh festival. It's a festival that uses heritage. Our Bangladesh children perform that event. It would be an wonderful evening if you can all come in. We have another organization in the city too. It's called South Jersey Association. Our organization is a nonprofit organization. And there is a Council agenda today of a resolution to waive all the fees. But I do see here it says only waive some licensing fees. So would request to waive all the fees for our program.
We'll amend that to include the language at the bottom of Resolution 427.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. And I have some information. May I give it to you, please?
You can pass it to the table right here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Glenn Whitkis.
He's got it. Next speaker.
David Travers.
Good evening, Council members. My name's David Travers. For those who fundamentally are retired police officers or have passed a sentence, just like the Battalion Chief that was here before me with the sick time. I was trying to get on this quick so I wouldn't be in the same position that that gentleman is in, having two years without that sick time payout that was promised. I'm like the fire department, sorry if that's the way I address this, Mr. Cunningham. I'm like the fire department. My understanding is, United City, PDA 24, and the city ratified contract this past January, which had in the language that $50,000 of sick time will be paid out to the members who have that. So I was just trying to get answers today. And like I said before, the police department's a little different boat than the fire department. The council was a little on the litigation. We didn't put in the contract. The contract was...
Council President, I threw you to a retired officer. Police did settle. I've advanced a memo up through to people I report to. Getting a decision on that. I would have a decision certainly before the next council meeting. So, sorry, I'm not prepared to offer something tonight. But please know that it has been advanced up.
Sandra Rosenfeld.
Good evening. I've been vacationing in Atlantic City for a very long time. Actually, since before most of you were born. I actually received my first kiss on the boardwalk. I was one year old. And I was scooped out of my stroller by a sailor who kissed me. That was my very first kiss. I won't tell you the occasion because it will get away my age. Something terrible has happened in Atlantic City. I know good things are happening. The university, the two casinos, but the noise, we're talking about noise pollution. I walked down the boardwalk and in the northern... I walked down the boardwalk, and in the northern end, every twenty feet, there's a screen with audio. You cannot have a conversation. I cannot talk on the cellphone, even for, I don't want to talk on the cellphone, but even for a one-minute call. It is horrible. It is distracting. I don't know who allowed it. Someone told me CRDA was, I don't know who was responsible. But it is, it is noise pollution, and if you haven't taken a walk down and seen those screens, there are about thirty of them, every twenty feet, it is, it is just awful. And again, you know, I love Atlantic City. I've been coming here since I was a year old, and now I'm financially invested here, and that's very negative. So I just, once, I want you all to take a walk down the boardwalk and see how distracting it is, if you haven't done so. And it should be remedied. It really is. It's a negative for Atlantic City. The other thing, I want to take just ten seconds to commend Ellen Rye and Mr. Finch. The house mix, I own the rental property, and the house mix door was torn down, doing some damage to my house, but the department under Mr. Finch and Lois Anderson did a wonderful job, kind of like repairing the damage, and I want to thank them. Kudos to them. Thank you.
Council president, just a time, Director Jerkins, maybe, I mean, do we have the ability to either adjust the volume or to make, make some type of official request? Because the one thing I'm thinking of, that boardwalk hall show, we're in a situation where sometimes the Impactivate screens that she's referencing will conflict with the audio on the boardwalk hall. And there's like multiple instances of that at the boardwalk. Do we have any control over that as a city? I think that's a good question.
I think we can reach out to the Impactivate people, find out if they can handle that.
They have an office right in Convention Hall that programs everything. And all it takes is Convention Hall, the times of the shows, to reach out to them, and it's very simple fix. I'll see them next week, and I'll definitely mention that to them as well. But they also do a lot of good for the city. Facial recognition, video cameras, water conditions, lost children. You know, it has its pros and cons, and listen, I, I like peace and quiet, too, when I'm up on the boardwalk. I expect loudness. I expect entertainment. I expect some music I like, some music I don't like, but I keep it moving. I go to Hollywood, Florida, and I see one place after another has a different type of music. We're going to have loudness up there. It's, it's the busiest it's been in probably the last ten years up there. That boardwalk is what we all want it to be. It's what the businesses need to survive all when they're on. And Atlantic City's back. I mean, it's, it's exciting up there. Like I said, I don't like every bit of entertainment, but I don't stay there. I move forward till I find something I like. That's what everybody else has got to do as well up there.
Council president, I think the biggest issue, I'll add my opinion, I think the biggest issue we have is the song that they're playing repetitively, the Atlantic City theme that they put up there is horrendous. I don't know who thought that up, but I swear that's doing terrible work to try to help us out in Atlantic City. It's making us look bad. It's like really cheap elevator music in a country western fashion. It's really disgusting. So if there's a way we could do, we have children in our school system that have a choir, they have a chorus, we could probably submit something. Matter of fact, I'm pretty certain that the, the young men and women that work in the facility here can hum something that's ten times better than that stuff. So if we did that, maybe it can also help decline the noise, capacity, the chaos that everyone's suffering from. Because I can imagine, you have one speaker every thirty feet, that adds to the depth of noise. Atlantic City should be excited. Expect a lot of noise, a lot of music, but if you have lots of stuff like that going around, it grinds at you after a while. It grinds at you. So I feel for everyone that doesn't like that, because that's the only issue I have. Other than that, I love the signs. I think the capacity, the technologies involved are second to none, it's necessary. It adds that flair that we need, too. I'm actually, I think we should, we need more lights, like going towards ocean and hard rock. It's a little dark back there. So we, we need to amplify the light. So I just think it's part of the array. I just wish if we can do something about that horrendous noise that they call music. Whoever thought that was wonderful, I don't know who they, they have.
So Councilman Delgado, I'm going to bring up a new business resolution, and we want to name the song of City Council's boardwalk music. So you want to give it, you know, pick and choose on our...
I might ask Mohammed to give me some Bengali music, because that stuff is really good. They got a lot of groove. That's right, some groove Bengali's. They got a lot of good music.
So it's all yours.
No Eagles chants, sorry, though.
Be nice, man. Joe Hicks?
Mayor.
Good evening.
Please, you know, we have two giants here in the House tonight. In fact, there are many giants, and there are many international giants here, but I want to point out two tonight, and one is your president. Mr. Small, and Public Works, and the second, you know, I was shocked when I was here, and I wasn't feeling too good. And Small said, "Mr. Small," he said, "I was feeling too good." He said, "Will we bring the mic to you?" I said, "No, no, you don't do that." He don't know how I felt when you made that statement. It took a hell of a bound to see a statement like that. And I turned around, and the Public Works, they say, "You take it, and I'll see to your call." You know, you got some giants up there, you don't know your reaction. They say, "Let's go, whatever." And he said, "Mayor, you're all going to do good." Thank you. Thank you.
Janet Fender?
Hi, I live at Ocean Club. I don't really have anything to add, other than what's already been said. I just have two words to add. Go Eagles!
Thank you. Said it any better.
Jack Willem Walters?
Finally, my legs are asleep. I just want to say, I am a proud resident and business owner in Atlantic City, and I commend all of you up there for all the goods you're doing to make Atlantic City better again. But I do have a few questions, and one has to do with the main reason that many of us are here. And that is, what is the zoning rules going to mean to residents of Atlantic City and Chelsea Heights? Will it affect our taxes? Will it affect our right to keep our properties? What does it really mean to the locals? Secondly, I know you have done a lot for monitoring waters and replenishing the beaches, and there'll be so many things to help both the residents and the tourists, the free tourists to Atlantic City. It's what we're all about. But there is a major problem that nobody seems to want to address, and that's all the flooding of West End Avenue. I know there's a lot of funding being put in many places, but the constant flooding is hurting both the residents and the businesses. And last but not least, I have a question. I commend Commissioner Delgado on your, the need for school lessons for children, but I'd also like to say for adults. Thank you.
Helen Gardbound?
Next speaker.
Friends in Action?
Good evening, mayor, Atlantic City residents, citizens. Glad to come before you to give you an update of what's going to happen July twenty-ninth. As we came before, what about our senior citizen prom? Well, senior citizen prom is scheduled, and it's the day of July twenty-ninth, from six to ten P M. at the Choice Bar and Lounge and Grill over there on the Chelsea Heights part of Atlantic City. Each of you councilmen, I want to give this to y'all, and to start with Councilman Delgado, walking his way down, it's an order. It's your invitation for the residents of Atlantic City to contact y'all. Y'all will not be contacting Friends in Action, the rest of Atlantic City. Our senior citizen buildings all have been given the same form y'all have to invite the residents. Their, so this is the director, manager of the property, are finally residents that are going to come to the prom, okay? Their transportation's being provided for them. Their, so some of our senior ladies, their hair will be done by some of the politicians and survivors in Atlantic City. The gentlemen, three barber shops, one may be coming to pick them up directly and cut their hair. All that information for them on like a, is on your forms. So if anybody needs a service, I'm like a, they let, they let me know, and I try to get a service to them. We have times we've been trying to do this, and Captain Gallo can tell, we've been trying to put this together for a minute. So this is your opportunity where each of your residents are going to contact y'all, okay? Y'all have their tickets, I'm like a, we'll be giving their tickets. Speedy, I went to show a park, so your mom was already ready, okay? Part two of this is, as we said, the first dance at the prom will be all nine of y'all with a senior. I know Colleen told me I had to have somebody talk, to give somebody a show, okay? But the first dance of the senior citizen prom will be city council and as senior of Atlantic City to come out and enjoy. The age is sixty-two and up. I believe there's one or two that are a hundred plus, okay, in our city. I said, that individual, I believe it's a young woman in our city that's a hundred plus. We've already talked, it's a hundred and five in fact. That is the queen for the prom, okay? So we have to get her there, but that is our queen of prom. Now, we have a queen of court, there's a queen and a king, a prince and a princess, okay, from sixty-two in age and up. So we're looking about between three hundred and so, the rest of Atlantic City, coming out for a senior citizen's prom and gala. The meal is led by executive chef Daryl Harmon from Atlantic City, who knows tour, he looks to the meal for them. But we want all y'all to come and see it, okay? Thank you.
What's the date? What's the date? I mean, you can't say anything, got to be fair and consistent, but he said the twenty-ninth. But first of all, mine says council president Marty Smalls, Small and First Ward. Come on, man. But in our, in our seriousness, you know, we applaud all your efforts, and we certainly support, you know, your initiatives that you try to do in the community, and I'm going to certainly support, I got six senior buildings in most of the city in the second ward. But as far as, you know, council participation, I just think this method, and, and, you know, I wish we would have discussed that, kind of puts us, you know, like on the spot, like, you know, forcing some people into action and, you know, having people call us and say, "Well, they need help with so-and-so." I think it should be more of a collaborative, you know, effort between us, the ward councilmen at large, you know, with the various senior buildings. That's my only, you know, thing, and, you know, like, everybody doesn't have the same resources. So maybe you can have a discussion with, you know, all the councilmen after the meeting about the correct approach to do that. Figures from a giant family will say, "What ward I live in?"
Next speaker.
A, Chowdhury?
July? Next speaker.
That's it.
That's it. Would anyone else from the public like to speak?
July O.
My name is Nels Akai. I'm one of the investors in Atlantic City for the past twenty years. I love Atlantic City. That's why I stick for it. Good and bad, I've been here for the past twenty years. I do have some suggestions for the council and for the mayor. We have two major avenues in Atlantic City, Atlantic Avenue and Pacific Avenue. If you look into it very carefully, many tourism, they are not going to walk there. They're not going to go in that area. If you ask them why, close the Neida House. I spoke with one of the ladies in CRDA that is retired. She told me that they are moving it out of the city. They have not done it yet. Please, if you want Atlantic City to be on top again, get rid of Neida House. That's the best thing you will do for the people of Atlantic City. Thank you.
And I want, I want to just say something that in our bi-weekly meeting with the state, this topic came up, and I want to take some of the blame for it. It was on the agenda to discuss, and, you know, I pulled it off because I thought that it needed to be more inclusive with the people. I mean, I don't think anyone should come to a council meeting without discussion and see something on the agenda. That wasn't fair. So I said that we were going to, you know, probably move it to September, and I told the lady from the needle exchange that. But we had a meeting two weeks ago with the state, and I was tasked with the responsibility of holding a meeting and having Mr. Curtis in that committee call it back, and I completely, totally dropped the ball. And I said that in the meeting privately, and I said publicly, I mean, I dropped the ball, I didn't even call the meeting. But I'm going to speak to Mr. Curtis, and we're going to schedule that meeting very soon, and, you know, with the goal of getting it back on the city council agenda. So your point is well taken. It's a discussion that has been ongoing, and like I said, I dropped the ball on that one, but, you know, we'll, we'll get it on.
Well, as I said...
And thank you for keeping it on our radar.
It's a, it's a good way to collaborate on that, because I think, at least for the two of us, we're pretty committed to, the needle exchange needs to move. And I meant to say something when the other gentleman who's trying to help with the revival of Ocean Avenue, and I applaud your efforts, but I think if we were able to move the needle exchange from its current location, it would help you tremendously and help the revitalization in that area and clean up those streets. So, you know, thank you again for putting that, keeping that on our radar. That's important.
But, and we get that, but make no mistake about it, Pacific and Atlantic Avenue, we still want to look the same way without that. So we have a larger problem that we have to tackle when that's just one piece of the puzzle. Anyone else from the public like to speak?
We were all sent letters about the zoning, and no one has...
Oh, no, 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 no. Listen, that's, that's on second reading when we... Yes, it's coming out very shortly. I'll call you up when you're speaking on that. All right, seeing the public portion is closed. Paula, I would like to bring up first ordinance, on second and final reading, ordinance nineteen, please.
May I have a motion? Hold it. Second. Moved by Randolph, second by Shabazz.
Ordinance nineteen is an ordinance for an additional name and designation for the nine-hundred block of Mediterranean Avenue between Maryland and Virginia avenues to be known as Commissioner Jireen Williams Way.
It was moved by Randolph, second by Shabazz. Anyone else from the public like to speak? The Hamilton family is here, one of, Hamilton Williams family. Hamilton Williams family, come on.
I will go get them, huh? I will go get Delmar. Come on, bring my girl Joanne on up.
Good evening, council, how y'all doing? Um, my name is Delmar Hamilton, my sister, who's Joanne, that's Denise, that's my girl, my daughter.
Hi, boy.
Hey.
Sup, Jessie?
Okay, that's nothing. And, uh, it was about twenty-four, but everybody had to be there somewhere, it's not a can, but, as they know, I wanted to get back on the road before it got too late. But, um, we had, uh, to discuss about the rename of the street after my mother, Jireen Williams. A lot of y'all know, a lot of y'all know, she was the second resident that sat on the board of commission with the Hallowdory. She also said with Speedy, and I thank you because he really looked after my mother on any trips and, and meetings and stuff, and I really appreciate it, thank you, Speedy. And I think all the rest of y'all knew, um, she also was the sister of Jamie Mae Jones, who was the first resident who sat on the board of commission. The, um, Hallowdory renamed the community room after Jamie Mae Jones. And we asking for that street to be named after my mother, which is right on Mediterranean Avenue. So it'd be a sister and sisters property. My mother also, um, served thirty years as tenant association in six bedrooms. She also helped bring the whole six program to Atlantic City. Um, I could go on and on and on, but it's, it's a lot that she have done for this city of Atlantic City. So we just asking for, for an honor of our mother and someone who really worked very hard in this city of Atlantic City, to rename that little portion after her.
And that's what we're about to pull on.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Bye.
All right, want to call a vote?
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Font Leroi?
Yes.
Hertz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
So, uh, Delmar, you'll, you'll get with me and we'll schedule the ceremony when it's appropriate, whenever your family want to do it. We'll get the sign done, we'll have, we'll have a nice ceremony for you all.
Appreciate it. God bless Atlantic City, y'all, thank y'all all.
Sorry for the delay, but, you know.
No problem. Thanks.
Okay, we now have ordinances on second and final reading. This is ordinance ten, which is amending chapter one sixty-three, land use development ordinance, which is implementing the university district overlay.
May I have a motion?
Hold it.
Second.
Moved by Randolph, second by Shabazz. Anyone from the public like to speak?
Why is it?
I'm telling you, you said you wanted to speak, you got the notice, now's your time to calm down.
Step right up.
Hi, my name is Susan Swor, I own property in Atlantic City and I got many notices. And what I want to know is, what's going on? I'm right there, like we're Stockton and South Jersey Industries, what's going on? Nobody knows anything. As, as taxpayers and property owners, we know nothing is going on in the neighborhood. We don't see anything going on besides the school and the, um, South Jersey Industries going on. What's going to be happening? I mean, it says that, you know, the zoning may include but not limited to public art galleries, restaurants, including dancing and entertainment, studios for arts, ceramics and civil war activities, drugstores. I owned a drugstore there, why they gonna put another one there? Okay, if that's what they're doing, okay? Museums, research labs, I understand, education institutions, academic classrooms, business, all the sec. What's going on? I called the city, you know, I mean, I haven't left any, any word about it, but what's going on there? This is, this, we want to know what this whole matter.
It's, it's allowable uses in that area. Doesn't say any of that's going to be done, but once you name it a college zones, those are the types of things that'll be allowable in that zone. So if a developer comes in and wants to develop something there, one of those uses are permissible.
Do you know of anything that's happening as of now?
Nothing has happened.
Nothing is going to work?
Nothing has, this is.
Just like the medical district.
We're going, we're going to allow you, is that your, those your questions?
Yeah.
Okay, you can, you can have a seat, and.
Mr. Preston, can I make a suggestion? Could I suggest that anyone who has questions, we take them at, at one time and then they can respond? Would that be easy? Because it might be some other people have.
There's a lot of people here.
Okay, you can do that, if you just take notes on the questions, then we'll allow you to come up and tackle them one by one. Next.
Counselor President, we have Brian Jackson.
I'm saying, he can, he can speak as well, but it's.
I'm so sorry, maybe I didn't make it clear, but my question was, and many, all of us want to know, what does the zoning mean to the residents and business owners of Atlantic City and Chelsea Heights? We have no idea, that's all we want to know.
Yes, we're going to get all your questions answered, I promise you that.
Counselor President, I'd just, I'd like to offer something. Hearing the people speak before the meeting and now during the meeting, maybe it would be helpful if we gave a brief overview, whether it was the representative from Stockton or the cities of people, I think it would better inform people's questions.
Well, I'm saying, I mean, I mean, they, they can ask their questions now, he's going to take copious notes and then.
Copious?
He said I was, he said I was an intellectual giant, so I figured I'd use the giant, Jason Hope. Uh, rubbed off for the drive. You know, but, but, um, so, so what, the process that we want to take is, we're going to let the residents come up and speak. They're going to ask their question, Mr. Preston is going to take copious notes. And we'll offer Mr. Jackson to come up and Mr. Preston can answer all your questions. So, anyone else like to speak?
I've been living in Atlantic City all my life and I live on the same street the whole time.
What's your name?
I want to know, what are you going to do about the traffic?
We need your name for the record.
Pardon me?
We need your name.
Oh, we reload. We have traffic on our street that's absolutely unbelievable when Albany Avenue Bridge goes up. Or when they start that thing from the Stockton, because we're not that far from Stockton. Yesterday, we were on the bus, it was an hour on the bus before we got across the bridge and the traffic was backed up as far as pleasant. And this is still getting to be constant right now.
Thank you. Next, next speaker? Anyone else from the public like to speak? Um, she? No, um, lady, she spoke already.
Hi, um, my name is Betty Sherman, I live on Hartford Avenue. And, uh, sorry, um, my name is Betty Sherman, I live on Hartford Avenue and I also received a letter and I'm concerned about, like, is Stockton going to try and take any of our properties? What about parking? How's it going to affect our taxes? Um, all of that. Um, we were all kind of in a quandary about, you know, we're just uncertain about what's going to happen and it's causing, uh, me and I'm sure other people a lot of stress. So I thank you very much for listening to me and, and answering, um, whenever you can. Thank you so very much.
Sandy Roosevelt again. Um, I, I think the concern is, is this a notice that eminent domain may take over and, and some of the properties may be condemned, usurped, you know, by, well, I think that's what people see and that's what they want addressed. Um, because, you know, eminent domain can take over properties for the public good and the university could be considered a public good, so I think people want to know the answer to that. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Lois Sablach and everything that's already said. And I have a question, uh, right across the street from the university. What, what is this NC one zoning, what is R two, um, and that's border, that's make Trenton Avenue, Atlantic Avenue, Dover and Vinton. Okay, what's R three, R three zoning districts? Where are all the numbers and the letters, NC one, that's my question and everything else that they said.
Brian Miranda with, uh, owner of the Wondabar. And, uh, I welcome our neighbors to, uh, the, the community in our neighborhood. Uh, and really, it's just, I just need an interpretation of the letter that came out in layman's terms.
Anyone else from the public like to speak on this matter?
My name's Helen Gildaw. The letter was so ambiguous, I just can't believe that it was passed through you first without not, you know, downplaying a little bit dissent to us. Because we really don't know what's happening. It just says Trenton Avenue and, you know, to West End and this. What are they going to do to Trenton Avenue and Albany and stuff? I don't know, you know, I think it should have ran through you guys and we had a simpler letter that was sent out so somebody can understand what they're going to do. You think that they're going to raise our taxes because Stockton doesn't pay taxes? So maybe all those streets, those houses are going to be able to pay more? Somebody's got to.
Hello, my name is Kostma Hi, I'm here for my father, he works six days a week, ten hour, uh, work, workdays. And, um, he immigrated here about more than twenty years ago and we love this country, we love this city. And I just feel like, when Stockton came in, I, I'm a Stockton student as well, I love Stockton. And I appreciate their help in building up our city as well. And I just feel like if, if it becomes a college and I have to increase our taxes, it'll, uh, make my father increase rents for other people there who stayed there for years and years. And I just feel like it might push us out and we want to stay here. We don't want to move somewhere else, we love this city and I don't want to move out of it. And I think that's one of our many concerns here as residents. And I just want that to be addressed as well, as well as like explaining this ordinance. I'm sorry, I'm like really excited. And, um, like, I know you sent out this letter and also said that you can like contact, uh, city, uh, city hall for an explanation on the ordinance, but I just feel like maybe it should have been sent along with the city too so we, we would have been all clear of it. And yeah, I just want some clarification.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak?
My name is Ryan Silver, I own the Trenton Avenue formacy, that's Trenton Avenue and Vinton Avenue. And I also own the property across the street directly across from Stockton, the new campus where the parking lot is. And my question is, will those properties be rezoned, will the taxes be increased? I, I don't know anything about it, I've just been told, sent to me.
But taxes aren't going to be increased, I can answer that.
They will not?
Yes, we commercial. We just, we just voted to adopt the budget, no tax increased, and I don't know if you were here, but.
No, I didn't hear.
Yeah, that's okay.
And is there, do you have any knowledge if the CBS is coming, reload the gas company? And there's a couple of open areas that haven't been completed yet?
We're going to allow Mr. Preston to answer all of those questions. He's on the hot seat tonight. Anyone else from the public like to speak? Seeing none, public portion is closed. Mr. Preston?
Good evening, my name is Bob Preston, I'm the acting director, pardon me, I direct, towards the audience. I'm the acting director of planning and development of the city of Atlantic City. I'd like to, I did take copious notes. Uh, I would like to first apologize for the, uh, what was characterized as the ambiguous nature of that letter. I can see that it's gotten a lot of people, uh, up in arms and, and. So first I want to say, take this number down, three, four, seven, five, four, oh, four. That's my telephone number. So that, even after this meeting, if you have questions, I would, uh, encourage you to not take over. Uh, the notes I took include, uh, traffic issues, parking, um, eminent domain, which is a bad word. I forget about that because that's not a part of this at all. Um, NC one, which is neighborhood commercial, that's what the NC stands for, it's a land use zoning designation. R two, R three are also residential zoning designations. And the, the question on taxes was answered. I just want to say that there's not going to be any change in the zone. That's not what this is about, the zone is staying exactly as it is now. What we're talking about isn't overlay, it's kind of like icing on cake. Cake's not going to change, we're just going to put icing. And that, that overlay is going to allow some additional uses that aren't allowed today in those particular areas. Um, I don't know, I, I don't have the letter in front of me, but I do have the, uh, regulations here. Is that that number? Three, four, seven, five, four, oh, four. That's my office. Right, Robert Preston. Um, some of the areas we're talking about are, are highway, zone highway commercial now. You would think that there are certain things that we might want to do in this particular area or we might want to encourage, they're not normally included in highway commercial. And that's why it said public art galleries, restaurants, studios for arts, drugstores, museums, uh, research laboratories, educational institutional facilities. Things that are conducive to the, the Stockton land use, uh, but that aren't necessarily allowed according to the zoning now. This overlay could then allow some of these uses to be included. It's not to say that they're going to happen, we don't know, we encourage them to happen because they're consistent with, uh, Stockton and they're not, um, going to impact negatively the residential uses that exist adjacent to them or in that particular area.
Well, I can't say that it won't be. Well, excuse, excuse me, um, our rules here in the chamber, everyone gets an opportunity to ask a question. And, um, because we don't want to allow the back and forth, we don't get the necessarily, I mean, the necess, you know, the proper professional to answer your question.
One of the things we're also, um, trying to encourage, um, as all we have to do is a, a major entry into the city, uh, we're trying to make it more desirable, um, more, um, encouraging, more festive. And, and part of what this overlay district will include, um, will be some supplemental signage provisions. Allowing, um, campus style setting throughout the university district, including, for example, flags, banners, uh, identification sign, both on the, uh, the properties owned by Stockton and the streets or other properties throughout the area intended to promote the identity. So it's, it's, we're trying to aesthetically improve. Uh, we're trying to open the opportunities from the land use, uh, to encourage businesses that are conducive to the university, but also with, you know, the neighborhood there too. So I, I see this as, uh, something to benefit everyone there. Trying to move this thing along, that the current underlying zoning, uh, was a little more restrictive and would not necessarily facilitate.
Thank you.
Any other questions at all? What's that number?
Three, four, five.
No, three, four, seven, five, four, oh, four.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Preston. Um, before, um, excuse me, um, everyone had an opportunity to speak. If you need to speak to Mr. Preston's. No, no, the, the question to answer, the public hearing is closed. So if you need to speak to Mr. Preston any further, he'll gladly hold a session after this council meeting or you can dial the three, four, seven, fifty, four, oh, four number. Uh, we have to move the meeting along and before we bring up, uh, Brian Jackson, who is going to be the C O O of Atlantic City camp, campus, um, Mayor Gillian would like to have a word.
Just to the residents of, um, Chelsea Heights neighborhood, um, the one misnomer that we want to make sure you really feel comfortable with is that this does not mean eminent domain. We don't support eminent domain in certain capacities because again, as you. We don't support eminent domain in certain capacities, because again, as you both, many of you mentioned that, you are longtime residents of that area. The other thing is that we want you to feel comfortable when we leave here. We believe that this is something that's going to enhance your neighborhood that we thought was neglected for so many years. More importantly, the letter that went out wasn't something that came out from this particular municipality, because we were not aware, although I knew that a letter was going out. We also wanted to make sure that we conducted public meetings, so you wouldn't have gotten caught off guard, and you wouldn't came in here with angst. So that's a mistake that was made without our authorization. But once you hear what the director of planning has said, you have the commitment from council that we wouldn't support anything that would harm any area of the city. And then naturally, we want to make sure that your input is involved in everything that we do, because it is your neighborhood. And again, I want to apologize for causing any angst for any of you in that particular area, because again, you mean everything to the community, because you live here. And some of the changes that are going on in that neighborhood, we're looking, we're looking at those things to be an enhancement. But we want to make sure that we include you in the movement, so you're aware of what's happening, and you're not caught off guard by certain things that are happening in the city. But I just wanted to make sure that I told you from administrative side, I know you have the commitment from the legislative side, that we would not support anything that would harm homeowners, businesses, and things of that nature. So I just wanted to make sure I relayed that to you.
And another thing, there was an extensive email chain between attorneys, I believe, the firm is charging Brian, my rep.
The legal...
Yeah, there was a, you know, email chain saying that they have, you know, community needles. Maybe these residents weren't notified. So Brian, if you could come on up?
Good afternoon, Mayor Gilliam, Councilman President Small, members of the council. On behalf of the Stockton University, we appreciate the opportunity to speak to you and the members of the Atlantic City community about this proposal to establish a university district here in Atlantic City. And please forgive me if my baggage to you. We're really excited to sort of take the lead in initiating this particular proposal. The state of New Jersey has designated Stockton as an anchor institution. So what that means is that Stockton has an obligation to utilize its talents, its resources, in ways in which we can improve the economic viability of the community in which we exist. We started this process over a year ago, talking with a number of constituents, members of the council. We met with the Chelsea Neighborhood Association several times, three times to be exact, as well as a number of other constituent groups that exist within the parameters of the university district. So I want to make it clear about what this university district overlay plan will not do. It won't eliminate any existing permitted uses of property within the district. It will not designate the district area as a redevelopment area, nor does it designate Stockton as the redeveloper. It also does not grant university condemnation rights, nor does it give the university the authority to approve or disapprove any individual projects or initiatives for usages within the district. And again, we're on, this impacts not the residential neighborhoods within the district, but it's specifically targeting the commercial districts which exist within this designated area. As it was mentioned, you know, if this is approved, we would utilize, you know, the opportunity to designate those areas with beautiful signage, which will really brighten up the neighborhood and really give it a sense of place and pride. So again, you know, Stockton wants to be good neighbors. We see this as a way in which we can help to stimulate economic development in the community, not just with private investment in businesses, but also helping to recruit and attract residents who want to live in the university district area.
Council President, it's okay, I got a couple of questions. Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, Brian Jackson. Mr. Jackson?
Who drew up the plan for the map itself? Who created the parameters of the map?
The parameters of the map came out of the university. We were looking to stretch out approximately three blocks, is that west and east of our university properties within the district, and extended all the way out to Weston Avenue, which is sort of the foot of when you enter Atlantic City. So we saw that stretch along Albany Avenue to the boardwalk, and then about approximately three blocks to the west and east of our properties, which includes the campus, which is also under construction, as well as the Stockton Robinson Building, which is at 3430 Atlantic Avenue.
One reason I ask is because it wasn't a designated spot as if you look at other districts in the area. It was, it looks like a congressional map. It's designed for specific intent because of the way it winds, it goes out, and it comes back in, goes one block into the community of Chelsea Heights, and comes back on the side. So that's the reason I asked.
That's certainly not our intent when we were...
Well, I'll just give you an example, not to say that's what it was. Just an example, and that's why I was asking, because there's certain areas designated on that site. Beautification, I love the concept, trust me, I'm with it all the way around. My concerns were the taxation, eminent domain, of course, the second one. And then who ultimately has to pay for any beautification to that district? And to give you a history sake, I think you were in the audience at the time we spoke at the Dante Hall, and I had mentioned how the casino district left a really bad taste of districting in Atlantic City because of the intent that was not disclosed initially. So that's why a lot of people are right now just scarred. We're asking, what's your intent? We don't know what's going on. We're very supportive of Stockton and all of its faculties and providing to the, you know, it's great to see Stockton finally come back home, because it's our dear. So I'm glad it finally came back. And of course, you got graduates here that love to tout their alma mater, our mayor, including our president.
Excuse me?
You know, so they like to...
I'm a Hall of Famer.
Like I was saying, we have people who were previous students who are very proud of that, you know. We're very happy to have that. It's just, of course, we're talking about the long-term intent and the impacts of the community, that's all. We're looking for all the good, we're just very skeptical about all of this stuff.
No, I understand that, and we appreciate that. Our intent is to, in our way, help to stimulate economic development in and around where the campus is located. We hope that it will help attract more residents who want to live in the community, and really help to stimulate more community engagement.
Okay. There was one last question, I was just kind of figuring out. The expansion of sports on Stockton, in the field of sports in Stockton, I'm wondering why Bader Field wasn't ever even thought of to also be included in the university, because of the way it offers it to expand.
There is a portion of the Bader Field district that is included in the university district.
Yeah, okay. I'm trying to get them to buy it, you know, they had, bought CD out of nowhere, money. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President?
Big taxes, only so much.
Someone talked about Stockton not paying taxes. I don't know, Mr. Jackson, if you should speak to it, or Mr. Preston, doesn't Stockton pay a pilot? Just for the record, someone...
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Could you explain what pilot is?
The university does pay a pilot. It's a payment in lieu of taxes. Stockton, as a state entity, does not have to pay taxes. However, we have negotiated with the city as part of the gateway project in our campus that we would pay a pilot. We did the same thing in Galloway when we purchased the Sea View Resort, where we paid a pilot to the township of Galloway. And we're doing the same thing for the city of Atlantic City.
Council President, I have a question, not of Mr. Jackson, I think it's actually of Mr. Swan. There were two big concerns that I called, both from the input that was given at the meeting, as well as outside the meeting, is that people had fears that this would grant eminent domain power somehow in an enhanced way. I'm glad that that's been cleared up, and thank you, that's good. But the other item that was brought up and just hasn't been clarified officially, which I think is important, is the question, does this overlay district establish the ability to levy some type of special tax fee or assessment similar to how the special improvement district does it? My understanding is no, but I'd like to have an official clarification. I think people would be interested in that.
My response is no, I haven't seen anything to that effect in regards to the overlay. It's just simply an overlay that allows additional uses.
Cool, thank you.
Anthony, if that ever came, it would have to come through council?
Absolutely.
Just like the special improvement, this type thing, right?
Yes.
But doesn't the over... Please forgive me, but the act that actually took the state over, over hit, over top of us, I forgot the name of it.
Mis...
The Stabilization Act, yes, I'm sorry. Doesn't that override all that stuff? Couldn't they input some of these things without our inclusion?
I can answer that. The way misread is worded, yes, they could, but I doubt they'd do that without talking to council and hearing the citizens' input.
Okay. There we go.
Excuse me, I should, I neglected to mention that on July 25th of 2018, members of the Stockton administration team and I will be here to give a presentation at 12 noon as part of the council meeting about the planning and development updates. So for any of you that have been learning more about what's happening with the campus and the university district, you will be here at 12 noon on July 25th.
That's, when is it coming?
Did he text you, have you seen that?
Sorry?
The council should have text you what you're doing back here.
She reminded me of that.
All right, call it a go. You and Martin doubled it.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative. Here we have ordinance number 17, which is amending Chapter 197, subsection 5, governing fees.
Move it, move it. Moved by Randolph, second by Marsh. Anyone else in the public like to speak? Saying none, public portion is closed, discussion, saying none, call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
Mava motion to group regular resolutions. I mean, ordinance number first reading.
Ordinance 20 is an ordinance implementing the South Inlet Transportation Project, approved by the casino. This is a pre-keeping a portion of ocean beach.
Mava motion?
Motion.
By Marsh, second by Randolph. Anyone else in the public like to speak? Saying none, public portion is closed, discussion, saying none, call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative. Ordinance number 21, amends replacing Chapter 207 of Article 5, mortgage registration of properties and foreclosure, the registration maintenance of vacant and abandoned properties.
Move it, move it. Moved by Randolph, second by Marsh? Call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative. Now up to ordinance as our first reading.
Yes, before we do that, we want to pull... 329. And then also, the language at the bottom of 427, where it says, "City Council of City of Atlantic City shall waive fees required..." I'm sorry, the language at the bottom of 393, where it says that all fees required for this event are hereby waived, we want to apply that to the bottom of 427.
We have all fees and expenses being waived for both Resolution 393 and 427.
Yes, ma'am.
That's already been revised.
And I would like to make a motion to group ordinances on first reading and regular resolutions. Move it. Second. Moved by Randolph, second by Shabazz. Fontleroy.
Good.
Tibbet. Chang?
I'd like to co-sponsor 393 and 427, please.
Good. Randolph, good. Marsh? Kurtz?
Co-sponsor under Public Safety and Public Works number 396. And you're welcome. I'd like to pull under New Business, 435, and that's all.
396, I'd like to co-sponsor with my colleagues. I'm all right on that one.
Delgado?
Shabazz?
Yes.
Okay, everyone's good?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be voting on first reading ordinance 8A, amending Chapter 57, that's putting engineering back under public works. 8B, extending the perpetual storm damage reduction easement. 8C, temporary easement for completion of the Brigantine Inlet Bolted Project. We'll be voting on 403, 407, 417, 426, 399, 400, 401, 402, 408, 409, 412, 413, 418, 419, 387, 393 as amended, 397, 410, 414, 427 as amended, 396, 431, 432, 434, 435. And exceptions, Councilman Chang co-sponsoring 393 and 427. Councilman Kurtz co-sponsoring 396. Councilman Shabazz co-sponsoring 396. Is everyone in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I did, I'm sorry. 435 is pulled for discussion. Okay, Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, with the exceptions noted.
Paul, can you add me to a guest package that we just did, the crew package? Okay, never mind, I thought you were going over my...
Okay, so, pulled item by Councilman Kurtz is New Business, 435, and this approves the First Amendment to 2018 intergovernmental agreements regarding solid waste tipping fees.
Can I have a motion? Move it. Second. Moved by Randolph, second by Shabazz. Discussion.
The question I have is, what's the reason for the increase this year?
Good afternoon, council. The reason for the increase of, you know, last year, August, we turned over the collections to an outside company. We also took over the Kelly Act, which included all of the condos and condominiums and apartments. Prior to that, we only took care of the city pickups, and we paid the Kelly Act fees, which was a reimbursement back to the condo associations.
So to be clear, the increase, it's because we're doing more volume with Kelly Act properties?
No, we're not doing more volume, we're just doing it as one solid cost, versus paying the companies a separate fee for pickup, and also tipping versus doing it separately. And now it's just one item.
Did we, when we were doing the Kelly Act reimbursement, did we reimburse the third-party tipping fees?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative. Okay, we have executive session, resolution 416, A Gustavo's Rays, workers comp, B Vincent Ayers, workers comp, C Troy Reed, workers comp, D Lola Spivey Wright, workers comp, and E Denise Mack, workers comp.
Madam motion?
Move it.
Moved by Randolph?
Yes, I have.
Second by Chang? Call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
No.
Eight in the affirmative, one in the negative, how long, please?
Ten minutes.
Okay, council president, we're back on the record. As I understand it, ordinance 10, we have to make a change in the vote, ask for the Chang?
Yes, Madam Club, I need to change to a extension of the ordinance 10, reasons most of my priorities is on the open level.
Okay, that changes the vote to eight, in affirmative, one upstaged.
Am I sure? Are you pretty sure?
Okay, now we have five resolutions, which are settlements after executive session.
May I make a motion to group all five, please?
Okay, ordinance 421, settlement for Gustavo Rays, 422, settlement Vincent Ayers, 423, settlement Troy Reed, 424, settlement Lola Spivey Wright, and 425, settlement Denise Mack.
Then it's moved by Randolph, second by Shabazz, call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative.
Madam motion adjourned? So move.